Okay, welcome to the November 6th, 2024 regular meeting of the City of Berkeley Planning Commission. Let's get right into it. Item one, roll call, please.
Roll call Commissioner Merker.
Here.
Chair Vincent.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Chang.
Here.
Commissioner Mickleton.
Here.
Commissioner Martinson. Commissioner Twue.
Here.
Engineer Hauser.
Here.
Vice Chair Gosh.
Yes.
We have a...
Great. Okay, item two is the land acknowledgement. And I'll go ahead and read the land acknowledgement out loud like we customarily do. The City of Berkeley recognizes that the community we live in was built on the territory of the Huetun, the ancestral and unceded land of the Chocheño-speaking Aloni people, the ancestors and descendants of the sovereign Verona band of Alameda County. This land was and continues to be of great importance to all the Aloni tribes and descendants of the Verona band. As we begin our meeting tonight, we acknowledge and honor the original inhabitants of Berkeley, the documented 5,000-year history of a vibrant community at the West Berkeley Shell Mount and the Aloni people who continue to reside at the East Bay. We recognize that Berkeley's residents have and continue to benefit from the use and occupation of this unceded stolen land since the City of Berkeley's incorporation in 1878. As stewards of the laws regulating the City of Berkeley, it is not only vital that we recognize the history of this land, but also recognize that the Aloni people are present members of Berkeley and other East Bay communities today. The City of Berkeley will continue to have relationships with the Lejan tribe and to create meaningful actions that uphold the intention of this land acknowledgement. Any other announcements related to that? Okay, item three, order of the agenda. I just want to make a... We're not changing the order of the agenda, I just want to make a clarifying comment about item 10. If you notice on... This is the Gilman Gateway Rezone Project. If you know there's... Notice there's kind of A and B, both as recommendations. Staff is going... The way it's going to work procedurally is staff will do a presentation on all of that content, both the rezone and general plan work and the EIR work. Then we will have clarifying questions or technical questions from commissioners. Then we will open it up... Open the public hearing up for public comment. And after all the public comments, then we'll close that public hearing, and then we'll have a discussion amongst commissioners, and then presumably we will take action on the action piece of that. Did I get that right, staff? Okay. Okay, item four, public comment. So this is an opportunity... First, thank you for being here on what is an intense historic day for many of us. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak or make a comment to the Planning Commission on an item that's not on the agenda. Would anyone like to make a comment today on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, I will move forward. Item five, planning staff report.
Great. Hi, Justin Porter, Planning Department staff. Just a few quick announcements. First, what to anticipate on your December Planning Commission agenda. We will have a discussion item on the San Pablo specific plan update, and we'll have an action item on our affordable housing requirements, a discussion of the fees for affordable housing. As far as upcoming events, there is a San Pablo walking tour that's being done as part of the San Pablo specific plan outreach. It will happen on Saturday, November 16th, from 10:30 to 12 o'clock. You can register for the event on the city website, and the walk is about 1.25 miles. And there'll be discussion of ground floor uses, development standards, public spaces, and other things that are being considered as part of the specific plan. Last little report are items that you have considered that are scheduled to go to the city council. On November 19th, the development agreement procedures that you discussed at your September meeting will be going before the council. And on December 3rd, the keeping innovation in Berkeley zoning changes that you discussed at your July meeting are scheduled for the city council. That's the entire report.
Okay, thank you. Could you restate again what the date and time of the walking tours?
It is Saturday, November 16th. It begins at 10:30 a.m. and runs until 12 o'clock. And there is a registration that's available on the city's website. So go to the city's website, look for San Pablo specific plan, and there'll be a registration link there.
Okay. Any questions on any of that? Excuse me. Item six is the chairperson's report. And I did want to make a few comments about recent events, if you'll indulge me here. So I wanted to comment about the public process, public participation in our democracy. Today has been a very difficult day for me personally. The candidate I had hoped to win the US presidency did not win. The candidate that did win, in my opinion, has repeatedly demonstrated that he isn't interested in upholding democracy as we know it. We shall see, but this is deeply troubling to me. But let me bring it to Berkeley. Much of our democracy happens locally, like right here in these meetings, like this, the work of discussing, debating, making sure many voices are heard, no matter how large or small the action or decision may be. That process, that engagement, is the heart of our democracy. And just as, my opinion is, the democracy may be threatened at the national level, it's also been threatened at the local level here at Berkeley. Our own city council members have been treated with extreme behavior particularly recently. Some have even quit their council seat because of it. And at a recent public workshop meeting on the middle housing ordinance, someone in the audience came to the front and physically assaulted a council member. There was a police report filed. I'm sure you've seen the news, and if you haven't, there's a story in Berkeley site about it. I was right there in the front, and I saw it with my own eyes. I was in disbelief. That kind of behavior at public meetings in Berkeley is unacceptable, and it sabotages democracy. We must be able to discuss, debate, share ideas, and disagree civilly. So I'm thankful that we have had none of that behavior here at Planning Commission. And we have had the middle housing ordinance agendized and discussed at the Planning Commission four different occasions by my count. And my recollection is that not very many members of the public attended those meetings or submitted comments to us. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I was actually surprised how few there were each time. So make no mistake, there has been a lot of democratic process on that topic in the City of Berkeley. It doesn't mean it's over. There has been and continues to be many ways for Berklians to make their voice heard to elected officials, staff, or volunteer commissioners like us. And so you need to do it. Just because the outcome of a decision is not what any one of us would have wanted, it does not mean that the process to arrive at that decision is wrong. We must respect and participate in the process of democracy, whether it's nationally or locally. And we must each seek to be informed and not driven by misinformation on an issue that we know... On an issue that we know that misinformation is out there to rile people up and cause actions like what happened at the workshop on middle housing the other night, because I heard it from people sitting next to me, talking about things substantively that are not in the middle housing ordinance. I've read the middle housing ordinance many times, as we all have, and I heard people talking about things that the middle housing ordinance was supposedly going to do that are not in the middle housing ordinance. So it is the responsibility of all of us to be informed participants, engaged participants, and civil participants in the process. In that sense, democracy, in my opinion, is a verb. And I thank you all for participating in it, and I thank you all for being here tonight. And I look forward to a great discussion about a really interesting project in West Berkeley.
Can I add one comment before?
Um, no, actually.
Oh, we're done with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Item seven, committee reports. Do we have any committees to report? Item eight, approval of minutes.
I'll miss an approval.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments substantively on anything in it?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, calling the roll, Commissioner Merker.
Abstain.
Chair Vincent.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Field. Sorry, Commissioner Chang.
Abstain.
Commissioner Mickleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Twue.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Martinson.
Yes.
Great. It passes. Okay. Item nine, future agenda items and other planned and planning-related events. You kind of have covered that, Justin, but is there anything else anyone would like to add? I feel like I've put an intense damper on this meeting, and I want to acknowledge that. Thank you for listening to me. All right, let's get into the meat of this. Item 10, the public hearing on the Gilman Gateway Rezone Project, a really exciting and big project in Berkeley that we have heard a couple of times here. So like I said, we're going to have a somewhat long and in-depth presentation from staff. So then we'll do commissioners clarifying questions or any kind of technical questions. Then we'll open it up for public hearing and public comment. Then we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll have a discussion here. And then there's one piece of it that we would take action on, which is adopting a resolution to provide a recommendation to council. But on the EIR piece, it's just comments from us to staff. Is that... That's active. Great. Okay. Great. Any questions from commissioners on the procedure of that? No. Okay. Okay, staff, take it away.
Good evening, Chair Vincent, members of the commission. So tonight, we are bringing forward zoning, West Berkeley, and general plan amendments as part of the Pacific Steel Casting Referral from the city council, which is the name of the Gilman Gateway Rezone Project. So as mentioned, tonight's meeting will include two presentations, one by myself on zoning and plan amendments, and one by my colleague Claudia Garcia on the draft EIR, followed by question and public comment on both topics, and then discussion and recommendation on the draft amendments. So first, a little background on this project. The site is the former Pacific Steel Casting site in the northwest corner of Berkeley, along the Gilman Street corridor and Interstate 80. And the area has an industrial character with a mix of manufacturing, warehouse, office, and commercial nearby. And these proposed amendments address a 2021 council referral, which can be found in attachment two of your packet. This referral directed staff to create a zoning overlay at the former Pacific Steel Casting property, redesignate it as mixed-use land industrial or muley, and override any existing constraints on uses allowed in that district. The site had been on the market for some time, as the current manufacturing zoning limits uses to heavy manufacturing, while interest from the development community has been for biotechnology, warehouse, and commercial or office space. Also, there are environmental contamination concerns, pension benefits that are due to workers at the sale of property, and neighborhood light and safety issues that are unique to the site. And so staff came to you in February and March of 2023 with the goal of creating a new zoning district, manufacturing research and development. Those reports are attachment four. And this district is consistent with the goals and objectives of both the West Berkeley Plan and the General Plan, and furthers the goals of this referral by allowing virtually all of the uses in the muley district while reducing constraints on some of those uses, and provides an efficient permitting process to expedite future development, which would in turn address the issues of public concern at the site. So as a refresher, this project began at the end of 2022, when staff received a zoning map amendment application from the majority property owner of the site, which is found in attachment three. Staff then prepared draft zoning text and a notice of preparation of the draft environmental impact report, and Planning Commission provided comments on zoning and scope of the EIR. Since then, staff have been preparing the zoning and plan amendments proposed tonight, as well as the environmental impact report, which analyzes potential impacts on physical environment from those changes, as well as a conceptual development project called Berkeley Forge that was included in the zoning map application. The next step is for staff to prepare the final EIR and amendments, which will be sent to council for incident early next year, and the development project could be processed once the amendments are effective. So in order to create the new manufacturing, research, and development district, staff are proposing amendments to the zoning text and map, as well as the West Berkeley Plan and the General Plan, just to add mention of the district. So tonight, Planning Commission is requested to provide recommendation on these amendments. So this map shows where the new MRD district is located. It's an 11-acre area that spans two blocks, that includes the former Pacific Steel Casting site, adjacent parcels, and is bounded by Gilman Street, the railroad, Page Street, and East Shore Highway. So the zoning map in this area would change from manufacturing to MRD. And the next few slides get into detail about the text amendments, which are found on pages seven through 14 of your staff report. So first, the district purposes would be to support industrial and commercial uses, provide high-quality employment, and add significantly to the tax base. So uses encouraged here are industrial, R&amp;D, as well as office and laboratories as support. And all projects would need to be performance standards for environmental protection and those that improve environmental quality. And since the Planning Commission meeting in March of 2023, staff are proposing to add a purpose statement to provide flexibility in development standards for large sites, which responds to changes in the economic environment that have occurred over the past eighteen months. So can please refer to page eight of your staff report, which provides a snapshot of the allowed uses in the district. The majority of the uses would match those of the muley per the council referral. And this slide lists the uses we are encouraging by reducing levels of discretion from what's required of the muley. And a few uses that did conform to the purposes of the district would not be allowed. All of the proposed development standards are listed on page 10 of the report, and overall the standards are the same as the existing manufacturing districts, with some differences that I'll explain on these slides. So first, the maximum height is proposed to be 55 feet, or it's currently 45 feet. In order to provide an opportunity to be consistent with the goal of the West Berkeley Plan, to allow for three-story buildings, given an R&amp;D hazard. However, with a permit, the maximum can be increased to 105 feet, and I'll explain that permit process later in the presentation. And maximum lot coverage would be 80% to allow for open space and amenities for employees. The minimum amount of off-street parking required would be reduced for most non-residential uses, including R&amp;D, manufacturing labs, to free up space for productive floor area that would otherwise be reserved for parking. So it's going from two per 1,000 for most non-residential uses to one per 1,000. The next change is to loading space requirements. So staff look to some recently approved R&amp;D projects in West Berkeley and neighboring cities that have R&amp;D-specific loading requirements, and we're proposing amendments only to R&amp;D uses to better support the unique needs of those buildings. So currently, a loading space is required when a building is at least 10,000 square feet in size. And so for this example, currently, a 100,000-square-foot building would require four loading spaces, and with the amendments we're proposing, that same building size would require one. And so it again aligns with what's required in neighboring cities and what's been demanded by recent R&amp;D projects in West Berkeley. These development standards, which are floor area ratio, setbacks, and building separation, and bicycle parking, would be the same as initially. So moving on to proposed permit requirements to build an addition or a new building, the MRD would be much more permissive than the muley district in this respect, in order to encourage a more campus-like environment and provide flexibility for businesses to adapt to changing building needs over time. So for example, in the muley district, a discretionary permit is needed for any addition or new building that's 10,000 square feet in size or more, and the proposal is to increase that threshold to 60,000. Also, the threshold for which a use permit with a public hearing is required to be increased from 20,000 to 100,000 square feet. And again, these thresholds are meant to provide more cost-effective process, encouraging flexible business growth over time in the district. So this is a new section that I'll describe in detail called modifications to development standards on large sites. So right now, properties that are within the West Berkeley Plan area can receive a permit to modify development standards if they meet certain eligibility criteria. And so this proposal is a permit process that would be applicable only in this district and only on sites that are at least 9 acres, to facilitate development with amenities and high-quality site building. And also to address the environmental contamination and light issues that are specific to this site. So typically, projects that would redevelop a site of this size utilize a development agreement to achieve this flexibility. But this section would be included in the zoning district regulations to help streamline the process. And so this section would provide a path for a developer to leverage the floor area ratio and lot coverage requirements only across all parcels within a project. So while the standards would need to be met project-wide, a standard on any single parcel could be increased by up to 20%, again, as long as it meets the standard on a project-wide basis. Also, the maximum height would be increased to 105 feet to create some visual interest and allow for open space to maintain views in the area. The applicant would need to submit a basing plan and a development comparison demonstrating how the changes maximize amenities. And the ZAB would be required to make findings demonstrating that those changes support enhanced site planning, would be completed within a reasonable time period with all required infrastructure and amenities. And all other use permit findings would still apply, so this would not be different... This would be in addition to not replacing our current use permit process. The ZAB could also add reasonable conditions of approval to ensure that the findings can be made and require a de-recert. That's the extent of the zoning changes. And in order to add this new district to the municipal code, the West Berkeley Plan could need to be amended to describe the new district and update the land use map, but no other changes are proposed. To the General Plan, some text amendments would be made to the current manufacturing land use designation to add mention of the district, but no other changes are proposed to that plan. So to recap, we are proposing amendments to create this new district in response to council referral, which requires amendments to the zoning map, ordinance, West Berkeley Plan, and General Plan. And so the next steps after our next presentation is to discuss and provide recommendation. Let's all switch to the next one.
Thank you, Ashley. I'll be sharing. My name is Claudia Garcia, and I'll be leading the presentation process for the environmental impact report. And I will increase the volume of my voice.
Thank you.
So introductions, as I noted, the City of Berkeley team for the environmental impact report comprised my colleague Ashley James and Aileen Pearson here with us tonight. Also, we have our environmental consultant, LSA, in the audience if we need to ask questions from the commission who has questions, Florentina Kachun and Lauren Peachey. Here is a brief summary of my presentation. I will start off by summarizing the environmental review process to date, provide an overview of the environmental impact report, discuss alternatives considered, and remind the commission and the audience how to comment on the environmental analysis of the EIR and identify next steps. To start off, SEQA is a public information statute, so the overall purpose of the environmental review process under SEQA is to provide members of the public and decision-makers with the information about potential impacts that may result from project implementation, and also to identify feasible mitigation and project alternatives that could reduce those environmental impacts. Accordingly, the environmental review process is solely focused on evaluating the project to identify potential environmental impact to the environment. The decision-making body, in this case, the city council, will consider the EIR analysis contained therein before making a decision on the proposed project. So we initiated... The city initiated the process in December 2022 by releasing the notice of preparation. Based on the council referral, it was determined that an EIR was required, given the level of onsite contamination and potential impact associated with demolition of existing structures and construction of a future project. We first brought the project to Planning Commission in February 2023 to conduct a scoping meeting and solicit feedback from members of the public and the commission on the scope and content of the EIR. During this scoping session, commenters expressed concerns regarding archaeological resources, tribal cultural resources, water supply, conservation, wastewater capacity and utilities, and contaminated soils. We worked with our consultant, LSA, to ensure that all of these issues, in addition to the required topic areas under SEQA, were evaluated thoroughly in the EIR. Now the analysis is complete, and the EIR is available for a 45-day public review period. The gold diamonds on the graphic there represent where we are in the process. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to briefly discuss the EIR, disclose those environmental impacts we identified, solicit comments on the analysis of the EIR, so that we can... Oh, yes, and just a reminder not to focus on the project merits. So overview of the environmental impact report. Quick reminder that when determining to prepare an EIR, the city must identify the appropriate document. A program EIR is required when we're evaluating the issuance of regulations that govern the conduct of a specific program. For example, implementing a new zoning district. A project EIR is required when we're evaluating impacts of a specific development project. Here we have an EIR that serves both purposes. We have a program EIR that evaluates the proposed rezoning of the 11.54-acre site and could result in upwards of a million square feet of a mix of light manufacturing, research and development, laboratory, and office uses. So SEQA requires that we evaluate what the foreseeable impacts of implementing that zoning district would be. In this case, we needed to assume that the entirety of the site would be demolished, and that would include the building located at 1306 Third Street, which is meets the criteria for listing under the California Register of Historic Resources. In addition to that, the city received information that... About a foreseeable project wanting to implement the zoning once it was decided on by the city council. This conceptual development project is evaluated at the project level in the EIR, and it could result in the demolition of existing structures on a 10.26-acre site. This does not include the building at 1306 Third Street, the property at 600 Gilman Street, or the property at 1430 East Shore Highway. As noted earlier, SEQA requires that we evaluate the specific topic areas in Appendix G. They are listed here. There are a total of 20, and each topic area lists specific questions that are required to be considered. For the sake of brevity, because the entire document is over 500 pages, or exactly 500 pages, we wanted to limit the discussion today on the impacts that were identified to be significant and unavoidable. Here, the topics that are bold and in black were found to result in either no impact, less-than-significant impact, or would be reduced to a less-than-significant impact with implementation of mitigation measures for compliance with our condition of approval. Specific criteria under air quality, cultural resources, and greenhouse gas emissions were found to be significant. Regarding cultural resources, as I noted earlier, implementation of the zoning district required us to assume that the building at 1306 Third Street would be demolished. This would result in the loss of a historic resource. Mitigation measure cultural 01 would require... Mitigation measure cultural 01 would require documentation of that historic resource in coordination with our cultural resources staff. However, that would not reduce the impact to a less than significant level, and it would remain significant and avoidable. As a reminder, the city is not proposing to demolish the building, nor does it have an application that is proposing to demolish the building. Regarding air quality, depending on the type of facility that is proposed by a future project on the site, it is reasonable to assume that operation of that facility would result in the release of toxic air contaminants that may exceed thresholds established by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. For this reason, because we don't know the exact nature of the future project, we included mitigation that could potentially reduce that impact, we cannot conceivably assume that it would be reduced to less than significant levels, and the impact would be significant and unavoidable. Regarding greenhouse gas emissions, because a future use may be a laboratory, it is feasible for us to assume that they may want natural gas on-site. As you may know, the City of Berkeley can no longer enforce without no natural gas, and implementation of new natural gas infrastructure would go against requirements set by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, and for this reason, the impact would be significant and unavoidable. So now moving on to significant impacts related to the conceptual development project. Similar to the proposed rezoning, most of the topic areas evaluated would result in either no impact, less than significant impact, or would be reduced to less than significant impact with mitigation and compliance with conditions of approval. In this case, the conceptual development project would result in significant unavoidable impacts related to air quality and greenhouse gas emission. As a reminder, it is not proposing to demolish the building at 1306 Third Street, and for that reason, that impact does not apply here. Regarding air quality, because we are assuming that the building at 1306 Third Street would remain, currently, there are four dwelling units on-site, and those individuals residing at that building are considered sensitive receptors. Based on the information that the city received, we assume that the conceptual development project would be constructed nonstop for a period of seven years. That would result in construction emissions that would exceed the cancer risk established by the state, and so for that reason, it could result in a significant unavoidable impact. However, based on the information that the city may receive in the future with more information on the level of construction, the time intervals that it would take, there is an opportunity for us to determine whether that future project would exceed those emissions or not. In the meantime, we did include a mitigation measure that would require the future project proponents to offer relocation assistance to the individuals residing in those dwelling units for the entirety of the construction period. Similar to the proposed rezoning project, it could be feasible that a future project would include natural gas, and for that same reason, that impact would be significant and unavoidable. Separately, as required by SEQA, the city conducted tribal consultation, and during the consultation process, we agreed on proposed mitigation measures and revisions to our conditions of approval as requested by the Confederated Villages of the Liang Nation. However, they also suggested mitigation language, requiring the city to enter into consultation should a future project require an addendum instead of a specific initial study or environmental impact report. This request was outside of the boundaries required by the state under AB 52, so therefore we did not include it, but we promise to share it with you as a decision-making body to request your feedback. Project alternatives considered. SEQA requires that EIR also describe a reasonable range of alternatives to the project in order to reduce feasible impacts. In this case, we considered three alternatives. The required no-action alternative, which assumes that no construction would occur on-site, the buildings would remain as-is, and nothing would be demolished or constructed. The general plan compliant alternative is another version of the no-project alternative that assumes that the rezoning would not be adopted and the site could be developed under the existing zoning district. The reduced development alternative assumes that the project would be limited to the Pacific Steel Casting Site, which includes nine parcels totaling about 350,000 acres. This alternative would require a hundred-foot buffer between the future project and existing residents at 1306 Third Street in an effort to reduce air quality impacts. Oh, sorry, square feet, not acres, that's a lot. Accordingly, this alternative would reduce impacts related to air quality, energy, greenhouse gas emissions, and noise, but it would not avoid, and it would also avoid the significant and unavoidable impact related to historic resources. Next steps. So tonight, as a reminder, we're here to listen to your comments on the content of the EIR. You can submit comments tonight verbally or written comments to Ashley by the deadline, 5:00 p.m., Thursday, December 5th. Her contact information is on the screen and is also included in the packet. Once we receive all of the comments, we will work with our consultant, LSA, to prepare a final EIR that includes responses to each comment. So we are not responding to comments tonight. We can respond to questions if there are any from the commission, but it's mostly a listening exercise, and so we will prepare a formal response to all of the comments
All right, thank you, Claudia. A lot of information at you at once, and so that concludes our presentation. And so we're available to answer any questions from the commission. I want to refer to you to open the public hearing and discuss.
Okay, great, thank you very much. So why don't we do questions right now? And you can, of course, ask questions when we come back to discussion. But before we move to public hearing, why don't we ask any questions? I'm going to just go down the road, and I'm going to start down at that end with Commissioner Moore.
Sounds good. Great work, everyone. I really appreciate the time, energy, and effort that's been put into both of these reports, but right now, I have no questions.
I have no questions, but I want to second, those were really very impressive presentations, and the description of the environmental process was just truly outstanding, and I've listened to them for years and made them myself, and I think that might be the best one I've ever heard.
Fantastic. Those were really great compliments. Yeah, I look forward to learning more. Well, I do have one question I feel like I should know this. At what point, you know, how solid does a development proposal have to, you know, how is this being developed in tandem with the, you know, overall development project that may be there someday?
Future development project?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we received information from an interested applicant about the conceptual development project, but we don't have a use permit application. We don't know if it's still, if a future project may be similar to what we evaluated. It's uncertain, but because we received the information, we were required to evaluate it as a foreseeable project.
Okay.
What's the size of the site at 1306 Third Street? In feet, if you know it. Well, somebody's looking that up. I didn't quite catch the part about the conditions of approval that you discussed with the Liang tribes. What types of things are they, and can you apply them in a zoning certificate situation?
Sure. The standard conditions of approval that we typically require discretionary projects to comply with are related to unknown findings of archaeological resources during construction, notifying a tribal representative should a potential resource be discovered, and a condition of approval related to the finding of human remains that are not inferred in a formal cemetery. They would not apply to a zoning certificate.
6,200 square feet.
Yeah, 6,651 lot size and 7524 building size.
I'm going to count these around.
Slightly different.
So the square footage was 6,651?
Yeah, lot size.
Okay, and what were the conditions that the tribe asked to be consulted on? You said if there was a new EIR, and you said one other thing.
Oh, the suggested mitigation language that we did not include in the EIR is on your screen. They requested that should a future project fall within the analysis of what we evaluated in the EIR and just required, for example, an addendum, which is not required to comply with AB 52, nor is it required to be circulated, nor is it required to be provided to decision-making bodies, basically documents stating that this project is consistent with the previous analysis in the EIR. They still wanted to engage in consultation with the city. That's more of a policy decision, and that's not something that we were able to include.
And here is a confession. I usually read everything, including those binders. We got this Friday, and I've been phone banking Georgia, and today was a shit show. So I haven't read it. Did you look at shorebird migration, glass collisions, other impacts on wildlife in the EIR?
Our Biological Resources Report did evaluate potential impacts to shorebirds, and then also potential roosting bats in abandoned buildings.
And did you include any standard conditions?
We included mitigation measures, and the impacts were all reduced to a less than significant level.
But you can't apply those to a zoning certificate project?
Correct.
Second or third or fourth comment, that it's a great presentation, thank you. Two questions. One on the tribal consultation suggestion, I guess, and this is maybe for discussion if we get there, but I wondered if you did any analysis of just kind of how that changes timelines of the project beyond, or of a potential project, just sort of beyond just like a 30-day, like, does it introduce a delay of 30 days, like, where the process stops, or does it kind of happen concurrently with other things? Do you sort of look at some of the implications?
For an addendum, yes. So typically, we're, AB 52 does not require us to enter into tribal consultation for projects that are exempt from SEQA or that prepare an addendum. We're only required to consult when we're noticing or entering into a public discourse, like, under an EIR or initial study, for example. It would enter delays. It would delay a project because when we consult, when we try, we're consulting on mitigation language, it's very open-ended, and it doesn't, the consultation process does not end until one of two things happens. We agree on the mitigation language, or we don't agree, and the lead agency, the City of Berkeley, decides to end consultation. And so it could extend for an extended period of time.
That's the consultation part. How does the 30-day, the 30-day comment period interact with that?
Yeah, it would also just add to our timeline, yeah.
And second question. So the exception to the, to the design, to the height requirement for developments over nine acres, currently, there's one project under consideration that is of that size within the proposed zone. Could, and this is maybe for discussion, but, so there can't be more than one of those projects in the zone as shown, but the condition, but there could be, under which conditions? It would only really be if the map were redrawn at some point to change the boundaries of the new zoning designation.
Yeah, so someone submitted an app amendment to extend the district's boundaries? Yeah, so the way that a developer could avail themselves of that section is to submit one project application that is a cohesive project of at least nine acres in size. So I have...
So there's one possibility, there's sort of, within the current map as drawn or as proposed, there's only one project that could avail themselves of that within the current map, and...
Well, the district is 11 and a half acres in size.
Right.
So, yeah, I guess if you're thinking like a mathematical perspective, like design, how do we get?
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at, maybe for discussion, is what would the conditions be where you would have more than one of those cases ever possible? And I think it's if the map were redrawn, just...
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, really nice, thank you so much, a lot of material. I just have one question about the residents. Where do they currently live on the map on figure one?
So it's the property that is on the northeast corner of the entire 11.5-acre site, and it's fronting Third Street, which is technically the railroad.
Ah, okay. So on the EIR impact, did that look at any of the residents on the other side of the tracks, or does it not?
Yes.
It did?
Yes, and so we evaluated all the nearest sensitive receptors to the site. That was, it's more apparent for the program EIR portion of it because it assumes that that building at 1306 would be demolished, and so we did identify the other nearest sensitive receptors, but for the conceptual development project, the sensitive receptor is literally directly adjacent to the boundary.
Question?
I guess I'm just having a little bit of trouble with this conceptual project versus the zoning and... I think I'm trying to understand how mitigation can be part of, like, basing or something. I feel like that's not something that's in this EIR, but that might be a possibility in a project EIR, like basing of the site, and is the site owned by one entity, or like the overlay, the boundary, or there's multiple properties there, right?
Can you explain your question about basing?
Can you describe what is in that boundary that has been drawn right now? Who owns what part of it? Like, this project seems to be applied to the entire boundary, the entire overlay?
Yes.
I'm trying to understand what the reality is?
Sure.
The realistic site boundaries, and who owns it, and in order to be able to take the impacts that we're talking about and do a realistic overlay of who, are they buying all the property, like, what's going on there?
So this figure, the different colors, the legend there, so there's multiple owners.
So the yellow, are the yellows different, right? So the Pacific Steel Casting is of one owner, and then what is not in the yellow are different properties, other parcels, it says. But are there multiple parcels?
So hi, I'm Florentina with LSA, and like Claudia mentioned, we've been very heavily involved...
Oh, so hi, I'm Claudia Elsae and like Claudia mentioned, we've been very heavily involved in this project. So there are multiple parcel owners and to go back to your questions about mitigation measures, the way this works is the mitigation measures would apply to any, anything that would be built in that eleven acre area, whether it's this proposed, this conceptual development, the ten acre one, or even if there's one that would come that's like one acre or half an acre. And you know, CEQA allows for, allows for multiple different levels of review. So any project that would want to build under the proposed zoning would have to be reviewed to ensure that they comply with the mitigation measures that are included in the programmatic EIR. So to answer your questions, yes, the mitigation measures would apply to any project that would want to build in that eleven acre site. And what we did with the mitigation measures is we understood there's a different magnitude of a ten acre project versus a half acre project. So what we did is we allowed applicants to come in and do technical studies that are particular to their application to then show us, hey, actually my project is not going to emit toxic air contaminants over BAQMD levels. Therefore, maybe we don't need to do this menu of mitigations that we put together. But then a ten acre project will come in maybe and their project-specific health impact assessment would show, oh wait, we're actually maybe going to have some contaminants above the, what the Bay Area Air Quality Management District said are acceptable thresholds for human exposure. So then we're going to say, well, you're above those thresholds. Here's all of the things that you have to do to lower your impacts. So a project would have to go through what I think is an actual very rigorous evaluation of how they can fit into the mitigation measures. And sometimes it is up to the city of Berkeley to say, hey, you actually may require additional things that maybe we didn't think about now because we didn't know all of the details. And CEQA allows for flexibility to add mitigation measures, to tailor mitigation measures to projects depending on the site. But short answer is yes, the mitigation measures included in the IR would apply to any project that would want to be built in this eleven point oh five acre site.
And what is the boundary of the Berkeley Forge, the direct full project that they'll have?
It's the blue, so, sorry, I can't see without my glasses.
Oh, it's something I'm trying.
So it's all of, so it's all the blue mixed together. So, yeah, so, yeah, so all of the blue, sorry, I'm like moving the camera and then in the thing. But the blue is all the potential project, the red is the whole area. So the potential development project doesn't include a PVP parcels? And that's the thirteen oh six parcel, I think, um, yes. So, so there you go, so the blue is the potential project, the red is the whole parcel.
Thank you, Claudia.
And, and the, where did that come from? There wasn't, there was no application or the?
There's a zoning map, there's no application.
A zoning map.
And so within that zoning map and no application, what is the concept of like, hey, if you adopted these changes, this is what could be developed? But it was in, as Claudia said, without a level of detail that you would expect with a project. So we don't have details.
Thank you, it's been a while since you appeared, so I needed a little refresher for what the boundaries were. I think many people might have needed that stuff.
If the programmatic EIR was based on a referral from the council?
Yeah. I'm good for now.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions on, can we go back to the yellow map? Okay, so that's the zoning with four families, isn't it? Are there any other uses in that zoning currently?
They're commercial uses.
Commercial uses, okay. And then is there any active use on the web on doing it?
No, it's for, the last I communicated with budget car rentals, that site was closed, but it was recently acquired by the order I'm in.
Okay, and then the one down here on the corner?
That is an active stadium yard.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience with me because I'm coming into this thing new. So I, I do, I did look at the plans and I did look at the proposed, I forgot what it's called, the non-plan that's, you know, proposed. So to follow up on Commissioner Negosia's question about this map, there are three parcels that are considered other parcels. So those are not part of this larger proposal. So my understanding is that LSA is saying there's multiple parcel owners. But they're all coming together to, on the next map to do this one big plan, is that correct?
So the, there are multiple parcel owners and the three parcels that Commissioner Tu identified are not included as part of the conceptual development project, but they are included as part of the rezoning project. So all of those parcels would be rezoned should the city council adopt that.
Okay, yeah, I understand that, but for all these other parcels that were listed as Pacific Steel Casting and the Berkeley Forge projects, these are all going to be proposed to be developed as one project?
Yeah. Sure. I sleep with the EIR under my pillow, just so you know. Mine hurts a little, but it's okay. So most of the parcels in the blue area are under one ownership. But it would be up to the, like the project developer to buy out any parcels that they would want to develop and include in their proposal. But, you know, so the, the potential project, right, is based on this foreseeable future project, but we, there's no, like Claudia mentioned, it actually, there's no application yet.
Right.
So as far as, you know, we just know what's on the ground, which is yes, most of it is owned by the potential project opponent, but not all.
Okay.
But it would be up to them to get that together.
And I think it was stated that there's a majority property owner, so that's what I'm going to call it. So it sounds like there is one majority property owner and there are three minor property owners. And everyone is going to be put under the same restrictions and conditions except for what Commissioner Merker, I think, said, that only nine acres are allowed to have all these extra, I mean, I'm just going to call them bells and whistles, the extra height, the, you know, and be put under extra restrictions as well.
I mean, like one, yeah.
Yeah, so to clarify, it's not a maximum, it's minimal. So projects of at least nine acres could avail themselves of an additional permit process. It is not an additional layer of regulation.
And the purpose of that is to facilitate holistic development of a campus-like atmosphere on the site to ensure that the site is redeveloped and cleaned up.
Right, so, so I understand, I mean, it seems to make sense that we have to make concessions to get the site cleaned up and to have a nicer, bigger parcel. My concern is the form, as, you know, there are people who still work, own and live in this area and who may want to do something different with their parcels. And so if this goes through, the MRD limits what they can do. So I was looking at some of the things that they were proposing for the larger parcel and they would get the ability to do things like a daycare center for their workers and things like that. But my concern is, so if someone wanted to take one of those smaller parcels and say, oh, you want to have a daycare center, they wouldn't be allowed because it doesn't fit into what is allowed under the MRD. Is that correct?
No, so for the nine acre, if a nine acre property were to come forward, they could, you know, do this average FAR, they can get the extra height. The uses would be allowed in any parcel. We're not limiting the ability of other property owners to implement the zoning district. They can implement all of the uses proposed under the MRD zoning. They just wouldn't be able to develop to a hundred and five feet on a tiny parcel. Because that, that wouldn't.
So this is the extent of the modifications that someone could apply to receive approval from, from the app?
I guess my, my confusion is that table in our packet, I think it's page 10, that shows a table of.
Allowable uses.
Allowable uses and it says, um, let's see, NP, isn't that not permitted? So in the MRD, you couldn't do, for instance, a theater? Or an amusement device arcade or?
Right, yeah, those uses that would not be permitted were identified uses that would not promote the intention of the council referral.
Right, so all those properties would be under those limitations.
One clarification too is that in muley, the muley is not what this district is currently zoned at. So these uses aren't currently allowed. The district is currently an empty district and we used, we had a third column, we took it out because it was confusing. So we can do the slide, you know?
So this, this property is, is currently so manufacturing, not muley. So those types of uses would not be allowed here either.
So the only reason I bring up the muley is because what you guys said, the referral from council was to rezone this as muley. But then now we're deciding that maybe there should be a different, a different zoning, which is the RD. So council is referring us to look at the muley, but we're saying we're going to do this other thing.
I think the referral was to consider uses under the muley, similar to what the muley allows, but did not require staff to rezone it muley.
Because it was looking for us to encourage research and development, so we looked at muley and pulled out some of the uses that we thought would be in conflict with the research and development focus district. And we brought that to planning commission and we discussed it in February and March. So we ended up with this list of allowable uses. We actually, since we came to planning commission in February twenty twenty-three, we actually expanded the allowable uses with the help of OED, conversations with the OED based on the economic climate these days. We weren't sure if MRD was actually going to pan out in future, so we've expanded what we presented to the council in March twenty twenty-three to be more flexible.
Okay, thank you, because that was my next question. So I, I really appreciate that because I was wondering what is the state of RND right now? And is there enough demand for this to have a ten acre site? In addition to what we've already permitted in the city? So it's nice to hear that, that there are other uses, expanded uses being proposed.
We have the manager of economic development, Eleanor Hollander here, who's been our partner on this project. And if you have more specific questions about the economic climate, she can answer those.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good. I think we have more discussion later, but if there's any clarifying questions. This is usually more of a quick thinking than we go to public hearing. I don't mean to cut you off, but we have plenty of time later.
That's fine, I'm, I'm good for now.
Okay, thank you. And I think that's actually really good context to both reiterate and transition to the public hearing because the, what you're seeing here is an evolution and I would say really great work by staff, planning staff and, and OED staff on taking the intent of the referral, which to Aline's point was to be muley-like, or I forget the exact phrasing of it, but sort of borrowed from muley, but proposed something that would really work well here, be creative, you know, I'm ad-libbing, but, and, and what you have done here to do that and apply, working with OED and the rest of the city, like, okay, what would work here and talking to potential, you know, possibly potential applicants on this? But, because what we are seeing is some evolution and you see it in that, those columns there, what we saw last time. So it's great to see the evolution of that while I think, you know, sticking to the intent, the broad intent of the referral, which did not have the precision that this has. And I think you kind of dial it, dial it well, so I appreciate that. I think that's good context for folks in the room to understand. The, the old reports on that are in or linked within the agenda on the digital version, if you want to look at. So with that, I would like to move to open the public hearing. Do I need a second?
No.
I always forget that. Just to close, right. Okay, so we will open the public hearing and if you would like to speak on this item, traditionally we do two minutes for individuals. If you are representative, an entity or organization, staff is also available or can be available and, and council members, you know, also will, can be available and take written comments as well. So, so with that, if you would like to make a comment, please use the microphone, I guess, in the back. Unless it can move up more, it seems funny in the back.
I don't think it's sample fine, but.
Thank you, Commissioner, staff. I have a couple of questions and concerns about the project. First is air quality. West Berkeley is, has the worst air quality and the highest rates of asthma in the city of Berkeley. I'm sure many of you know. I am going to be talking about the Berkeley Forge development because of the heart of the, of the draft negative deck. So there were a lot of facts and figures associated with this development, which I understand is only conceptual, but it was, it was discussed. So there is a trip generation estimate of nine thousand nine hundred and eighty daily auto trips, which this proposal would generate for this site. And this is not the only West Berkeley biotech lab campus that's being proposed. Someone in the community has added up the number of all the parking spaces that are in the permit park, in the permit pipeline or will be, and it's over five thousand. It's the number we have, you, you guys may know better than that. The concern I, I have is what is the cumulative impact of air quality in West Berkeley? Already the community that suffers the worst from bad air quality in Berkeley. Of all these developments in West Berkeley and all, and these daily auto trips, nine thousand nine hundred and eighty daily auto trips just from this one at the old PSC site, not to mention all the others in West Berkeley. How will these developments not significantly worsen air quality in a community that is already suffering from bad air quality? That's number one. Number two, traffic. Berkeley Forge houses nineteen hundred parking spaces, three seven-story parking garages. Why at the same time the city is massively reducing parking requirements for housing in the name of sustainable development? Looking at you all, is the same standard not required for industrial development? Why can't we have an Emery, an Emery go bus or something that the developers pay for that connects to BART instead of five thousand parking spaces and all the air pollution and traffic? Third, biohazard.
Can I just say, in the spirit of democracy, I am going to expend your time, which is why I'm interrupting you.
Oh, then I think we're.
So as this gentleman is the first speaker, we're going to go to three minutes. It doesn't seem like we have an enormous amount of speakers. So I think three minutes is absolutely fair, so.
Thank you, sir.
You have, I don't know, so you have a whole folder.
Thank you so much, yeah. Biohazards, bio labs often use toxic materials that could potentially leak into the environment. We hope not, it can happen. It's not clear how this risk to the West Berkeley community will be addressed. I did not, I did have very quick a reading through the, through the EIR today, I may have missed it. I didn't see how that's addressed. West Berkeley, west of San Pablo Avenue, on USGS maps is listed as subject to liquidation and as a result of earthquakes. Didn't see that addressed and how, how in, in bio labs, which handle potentially toxic materials that are on land and subject to liquidation, how are you going to address that? Dr. Christina Hill, UC Berkeley, has warned about. Dr. Christina Hill, UC Berkeley, has warned about seal arise and related groundwater arise, especially impacting West Berkeley. This site has many toxics on the surface and below the surface. One remediation that's discussed in the EIR is capping, that's the cheapest and most common. That won't work if this site is subject to groundwater rise. The stuff is gonna come out and around the concrete cap. And then we'll be releasing to the community. So again, here the question is, how is this issue addressed for this site and any future development on this site? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Okay, so three minutes, yeah.
Okay, so I've already seen the presentation on the project for this site. I saw it probably like a year and a half ago, Mark Rhodes gave it. And it's nice that the staff and Mark Rhodes are on the same page because they use the same language of a cap, of a campus-like atmosphere. And when Mark Rhodes brought the project out, you know, we got to see it with all the little buildings and how the streets are gonna be changed and how we're gonna work with the trains and everything. So we've already got a project for this, and as I said, I've seen it. And at that presentation, one of the major issues was what to do about the toxic site. And Mark Rhodes admitted at that time that the plan for capping the site really was a problem with groundwater rise in this area. And so if we have groundwater rise that lifts the toxins out from the cap, I mean, those are not just going into the neighborhood, as was mentioned, they're also going into the bay where we have our biological, our birds and our, our little animals in the, in the bay. So this really is a problem. And capping is the cheapest, but that's not the satisfactory answer. So that, that really needs to be, that needs to be fixed. So those were really my main concerns. I appreciate that Commissioner Mickelson brought up birds and wildlife because it is near the bay, we do have a lot of wildlife, and this building can be a hazard for our, our wildlife. And, and so we've, we've got some problems here. And I hope that you address those and that we have, in the end, a project that addresses those hazards and not just taking the quick easy way out. Thank you.
Thank you, that was a really interesting biohazard presentation, we appreciate it. So I agree with what my neighbors have also said already. And in West Berkeley, we're very concerned about toxics. We've been living with Pacific Steel Casket, calling up Bay Area Air Quality Management District, have that on speed dial, and then the asphalt plant, and the fire at the asphalt plant. So we're very, very concerned about industry in West Berkeley. We're not saying no industry, but we're concerned. And just saying that Bay Area Air Quality Management District is going to regulate everything or take care of it, or it's, it's sensitive topics for people who have lived with that for a long time. So that said, I think the community would really like to have more definitive guidelines around how this is going to play out. And that if something escapes or something smells really bad, then they don't have to be calling up Bay Area Air Quality Management District. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the topography. So as you all know, we live in an earthquake zone. And it's not really clear what might happen, you know, when an earthquake occurs, especially as was mentioned regarding the liquefaction issues. And also that there's a gas line running under the, you know, the east shore highway. And so these things are quite sensitive for the people in, in West Berkeley. We have not had any spillage or anything falling from the trains like has happened in the Midwest. But we are concerned about how the EIR is taking into consideration the other geographic abnormalities or abnormalities of the particular site. And we're hoping that that could be addressed. And I understood that the people living so close by are very sensitive receptors. But actually, we're all sensitive receptors, especially as was presented regarding the air pollution in West Berkeley and the condiment pollution that happens in this area. So those are our concerns, and we're hoping that they could be addressed. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, can you all hear me?
I need to call.
Thank you, this better? Thanks, folks, my name's Alan Moore, I'm a land use attorney. I've been representing for over a year. I'll use their first names, Rafi and Yvonne, with regard to their building at 1306 Nerd Street. It's a beautiful historical building, it's a historical resource. It has live work, folks there, four families that are there that work and live there. Tenants, artists, it's a working studio. You look in there, you can feel the history and the art, and it's a historical building. So why are we here? Well, the, there's an old adage, I celebrate my 70th birthday coming up in a couple of weeks. There's an old adage that I've had my whole life. It goes as follows, a proverb, "He who chases two rabbits doesn't catch either one." And with this EIR, I'm afraid, and I've reviewed hundreds, maybe thousands of EIRs, 43 years in the business, for large firms here in the Bay Area. But this EIR chases two rabbits. The first rabbit, and this was brought out by the commissioner comments, by the identical comments that I had when I saw it. I couldn't figure out when the EIR was discussing the overall project, rabbit number one, which is environmental review under CEQA of the city-initiated downzone. That's project number one. Or rabbit number two, which the commissioners brought up, is the conceptual plan. How does the mitigation measures from the, for the conceptual plan integrate with the mitigation measures imposed by the overall downzone? And where are the properties within each zone? Our property is within the overall downzone or rezone area, but not within the development plan. The LSA representative indicated she sleeps with the EIR. I went down to Staples because I had the EIR on my computer, as you all have. I couldn't scroll back and forth and figure out how the mitigations were integrated between the two. And believe me, I've reviewed thousands of EIRs. So I had to download it, Staples, $300, and I have a hard copy here. It's this thick, and I went through it stem to stern. It does not discuss the impacts of the conceptual project on this historical building. It never gets there. It says they're discussing the conceptual project, conceptual development plan, as a project-level EIR. How could it do so when there's no project? There's no project on file, there's no project proposed. Now, I fully understand under CEQA that reasonably foreseeable impacts should be addressed in an EIR. But this goes further, this EIR, and says, we're gonna take this conceptual development plan and review it as a project, as a project-level EIR. And in doing so, it forgets what its purpose was, it forgets the second rabbit. It forgets that it's supposed to address the impacts of the conceptual development plan or the rezone on these folks, on these folks that are gonna live there. Is that my three?
Yeah, you're doing good.
Okay, that, I'm gonna conclude, but I did want to say I appreciated very much the introductory comments about stability and respect that the chairman made. Great respect for your staff, they always responded to me, I disagree on the law. But I appreciate your comments, and I think as a planning commissioner myself, while at Crete 14 years, that that kind of comment of the introduction of each meeting can really help set the tone, not make a damper in the room as you were concerned about. So thank you for, for speaking, Steve.
Thank you, very good.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Scott Robinson. I've been in the city of Berkeley as a commercial industrial broker for 35 years. My family has been here in Berkeley since before the turn of the century. We have industrial properties throughout the city, including Ashby Lumber. We actually, we own that little property that's a staging yard at the bottom of the map on there. And it has always been rented in the past as not a part of the foundry. It was rented at Pacific Steel for a trucking yard and access. We worked with the city to get Universal Waste Recycling Center a few years back. At that time, the city was not even aware that we were not a part of the overall Pacific Steel properties. So we, with my architect Fred Hired, who did the Fieldwork Brewery, Fred's been along, around a long time, he worked with them. We got and addressed Dallas, that 1433. Since then, we've had the city of Berkeley's contractors on there, Golden State Bridge, that built a freeway overpass. The problem that we're having, it's always been a construction yard or staging yard. Now, given that I've been in Berkeley and I was a commercial broker for clients, I, I applaud development and upgrading the city. What's happening here though is because we have a developer coming in, and I don't think labs is a bad use for the property for the future, it's an ice war now. What's happening is kind of the cart being put before the horse. And what's happening is the developer saying, hey, we have a great idea, or would you go for it? The city's creating the zone. And I knew Mark Rhodes for years, because I used to sit in front of him for clients. And we met with Mark, Fred and I, and we said, is your client interested in buying our property? And IQHP made it clear they were not. What is gonna happen here is our site's gonna be kind of rendered valueless if we can't rent it to construction yards. And we're not gonna be able to develop a lab building on that small parcel. It's about 40,000 feet. But what I've been told is you have to have nine or 10 acres for the economics. So my letter, there is a letter in your packets from a co-trustee attorney. That's not a threat letter, what that is, is she and I represent the family trust and beneficiaries. And we're saying, what, where will, could we be a yard in the future to remain flexible? Where are you gonna house 900,000 square feet of staging material? I've had Tesla approach us for transportation services. I've had Waymo recently approach us, other uses. But what my understanding is, originally we were going from an M-zone, which allowed a lot of different uses, to a muley zone, which is similar to being like industrial. And all of a sudden, we leaped far, nothing against staff, I hear you, it'd be great, to go to this lab development zone. And so it's a big leap of faith here, which is gonna put this property in real hardship. I was very open to talk to the developers, they made it clear they're not interested. We have other companies though that are looking, transportation services. So one of the things that I did with the city of Richmond is they built federal labs, as you all know, along the I-80 freeway years ago. And we had industrial yards, live work, we had trucking yards, we had everything. And I went to that staff, and we talked, and we said, hey, just let us be flexible to operate and lease until these developments really come to form. And then we're happy to amend or work with you. And that worked. Our family owned down on Shellmount Street, an acre there by the Bay Street Theater, still sits vacant today. Emeryville made us tear down those warehouses that were generating income. They've never been rebuilt. And lastly, I'll say, being a broker, still am, I sold the building on Hollis Street that I owned to a friend of mine who's a lab developer in 2018. He's never rented it to this day, it sits vacant at 62nd and Hollis. The market has fallen out, you know, and I even know this developer that's looking at this project, I think they have a $2 billion project in San Diego, I read.
Can you?
And.
I'll wrap it up.
And so the point is, the lab market may not come back for three to 10 years. We owners who aren't a part of this development would just like to be able to function and cash flow until then, so.
Thank you. Please, folks, try to stay to time, because we don't have a bell going off. And I hate to interrupt folks, but I will if it was a long line.
My name's Tim Southwick. I'm a businessman in Berkeley for 50 years. And we are the owners, recently, of the land that's outside the area, but the one that's gonna be rezoned. That's where the Avis budget rental car was on 600 Gilman, was there for 35 years, actually 40, I think. And we are trying to buy property in Berkeley to replace the, by the way, Toyota Berkeley, we have close to 100 employees in Berkeley. And as well as Joe's Tires on University Avenue, which is included in that count. But we've been trying to buy a car washing facility for probably 10, maybe 12 years because the, and we want it to be especially a brushless. Many people that own high-end cars, Teslas and Mercedes or Toyotas, they, they don't want brushes on their cars. But we're trying, we're trying to replace the, well, it was disappeared on Fulton Street, if you remember that, it's now a housing project. In those days, we used to send all our service customers with a token up to the brushless car wash. And they'd hand the tenant there, Ali, who was the owner there at the time, they'd hand him the token, and he'd give him the car wash, and it was free. So all our service customers had free car washes. Well, that went away. So we've all, always scanned the area, because we have property on Second Street. And we're always looking for a place to put a touch, touch this car wash. So about four years ago, a broker comes to me and he says, hey, I got this property on 600 Gilman, would you be interested in buying it? And I said, go down, take a look at it, geez, there's a car wash there. This would be perfect, whoop, whoop, you're with us, great. Well, long, short, story short, we were outbid of the property and we kind of forgot about it. So here comes the new developer in there that buys all this property. And that's who ended up buying it. Little bit owned us, it never closed escrow. So here I am, sitting in my office, two days after Thanksgiving. And the broker calls me, I didn't even recognize his name on my cell phone. He says, the property you were looking at two and a half years ago, it's available and Avis wants to sell it to you. Could you close escrow in five days? They wanted to get rid of it before the end of the year because of business purposes. They were back in New Jersey, their main office. So we bought it. So we go in for a business license.
Your three minutes is up, do you have a specific kind of comment or question?
Do I, yeah, well, yes, oh, sorry, I need to get to that, I'm sorry.
Do it in 30 seconds, please?
It's zoned for car wash, but not for public car wash. So I want to make sure that you could do things in this zone. And then we're, we're adding a charging station, fast charging stations for Teslas and other electric cars in that area. So the people can go in there. But what we found out, the people that charge, use these EV chargers in Berkeley, like on Ashby Avenue, they're bored silly because they don't have a coffee when they're charging. Hey, I see, you're right. And anyone that has an electric car knows, you gotta have a cup of coffee because it waits alone. Well, our chargers are gonna be 10 to 20 minutes full charge, 80% charge. And we want to be able to off people and take out coffee. And I want to make sure that you can do that within this zoning. You see, that's where I've gotten from, so I got a lot more to say, but that would take another day.
Thank you, guys, thank you. Okay, any other comments, public comments on this? Okay, without it, we've disclosed the public hearing. And I have a second. Commissioner Merker, or Commissioner Fu, or Commissioner Glick, Vice Tergosh, you choose. I think it was Vice Tergosh actually jumped in first.
You're so eager to close the door.
Roll call to close the public hearing. Commissioner Merker.
Yes.
Chair Vincent.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Commissioner Nickitich.
Yes.
Commissioner Martinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fu.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gosh.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Okay. Okay, so, it's a lot to discuss. I think, staff, what would be most helpful? Would it be most helpful to kind of bifurcate the discussion, the comments, and maybe start with the EIR and get comments? Because we're not taking action on EIR, we're just giving comments. So, if we could all do that. And then, we'll go to the zoning aspect of this. And in which case, we will make a motion for... Yes?
Can I remind everyone, like, just thinking about Commissioner McKinson's comment about how this was just received last Friday? The public comment period on the EIR is open until December fifth at five P.M. And so, we didn't expect, I mean, we'll take whatever comments, we're recording them and we'll address them in the final EIR. But we didn't expect that you would give us your complete comments tonight. Same with the members of the public. You all can look at your packet, get Ashley's email address or mailing address at the city and submit your comments in writing for the EIR. But what we do need from you tonight are your comments on the zoning.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. So, okay, you've heard comments related to EIR from the public as well. Is there anyone here who is on commission who would like to make a specific comment, you know, to staff in addition to what you've already clarified to ask questions about that you don't want to, that you really want to do it here and not in writing?
Sorry.
No, please.
I don't have time to do it in writing, this is all the time and capacity I have, honestly. So, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I think a couple of things. One is, I think just the setup of it with this large project, to me, feels challenging to understand the actual impacts. Like, it feels like this is the most massive, this is the biggest, it's all kind of happening at the same time. And it doesn't feel realistic and to me, it creates a sense of worry. You know, this is a very sensitive project, it's a sensitive area. I think I was looking back to why we're even doing this. We're talking about workers getting their pensions. I mean, there are other things that say why this needs to move forward, while acknowledging that it's very sensitive. So, I feel setting it up in this way, where it's like this big, bad monster, when that may not actually be the reality of it, is kind of confusing for me in evaluating the impacts. In fact, I would love to see mitigation measures that... If, I, and EIRs are extremely confusing to understand for a person. So, and I'm going to say what I'm saying and you all will tell me whether it fits within the framework or not. But I would like to see mitigation measures that, talk about phasing as a mitigation. I would like to see mitigation measures where it's not just relocation, it's also protection of those resources during construction. Because it's not just about protecting, like, what about things that will get into the houses during construction? So, I don't know if that's sort of in there. So, it's not just about moving the people, it's preserving their homes or properties in a way that they can come back to, that's not permanently damaged in a way that's invisible to the eye. I want to see mitigation measures. One question I did have on the GHG reduction, doesn't that apply to any project that we build? Is it specific to this? Because it sounds like anything we build will have that impact of natural gas usage. Is that an accurate reading?
Yes, so, according to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, any project that proposes natural gas goes against the overall state's GHG emission reduction plan. So, for that reason, most of the projects do not propose natural gas. If they do, they will require an EIR because it would be as significant and avoid impact.
Okay, so, there is some, it feels like there's some guardrail in there from like state law to discourage use of natural gas. And therefore, the mitigation to me seem very, not strong enough in that sense, like just electric charging points, EV charging doesn't seem to fully capture. And I can talk about it when we come to the zoning piece around the parking piece. It is us people who are trying to reduce car usage. So, I would love to see mitigations that talk about how we reduce cars. So, maybe it'll come through the zoning, I'm not sure how. And has the city considered a DA since we passed this new DA thing? I'm also sort of wondering if there's been any, it hasn't gone to council.
The development agreement hasn't been discussed, so we are, we cannot confirm.
Right. But is that a wish you've heard from the developers? To approach it in a way where it's more of a dialogue? It's such a sensitive site, a dialogue seems to be most beneficial instead of setting up these sort of very rigid rules that don't help the developer or help the community. Because I would love to see them do a shadow, if possible, you know. So, I think those were my sort of major concerns. We never talk about in EIR, the impact of a building like that just sitting in a community, the damage it does to urban fabric, to the damage it does to just a sense of creating a community. So, I just see a lot of benefits to addressing that. I personally love ruins, industrial ruins. I love looking at them. But I understand that that's probably not something you want to be around or look at like every day when it's, when it's such a, such a rough site. So, I do want to see it move forward. And if the DA does pass, I would love to see actually a discussion and a dialogue with whoever is planning to build here, rather than very rigid rules. I think the rest of, I'll come back to my rest of my comments on the zoning.
As I said, regarding the comments about what mitigation applies to the rezoning, what applies to the conceptual project? The executive summary does include a complete table that clearly identifies which mitigations apply to what. And it also identifies the specific impacts related to each of those two projects.
Separate, do you mean?
Yes.
And if I can, can I address two of your questions? So, the first one was about, like, why is this EIR so big? Why is this project so big? Within EIR, we have to evaluate the outer bounds of a project in order to make sure that any project that's proposed falls under that. And so, you know, it's a problem when we analyze a smaller project and then we end up developing above that and we have to spend another year and a half and another half a million dollars on the EIR. So, you know, so I just wanted to say that. And the second thing with the DA, and, you know, we discussed with the property owners, the DA, master use permit, them just using our regular zoning. And it really is their decision. It's up to a private property owner how they want to move forward. And so, we really don't have any influence over that. Separately, City Council had this referral, and so, that's why we looked at the rezoning. The conceptual project may or may not come to fruition. It may be nine acres, it may be five acres. They may utilize some of the things that we proposed, which may, you know, recommend that they may not. And so, we fully have no control over what is going to come forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think you've gotten some comments or questions from us. You've got some really good comments from the public here. And again, as a reminder, folks can submit written comments via email to Ashley James for another month, till December fifth, I believe, right? Okay. And the public can reach out to staff, to Ashley on the project for questions or hearing more about it, is that correct? Okay, so, let's move to, I know it's hard to bifurcate the content, but let's move more to kind of the zoning aspects of this item. So, would anyone like to pick us off with some comments, discussion, additional questions?
I can start.
Commissioner Fu, thank you.
Yeah, so, I would say that we should allow any current uses that are allowed in the M-zone should still be allowed in the MRD zoning. You know, that keeps consistent with what we've generally done over the last few years, which is to allow new things, but still allow what we used to allow. So, I will make a motion that we recommend the proposed amendments, but also that any use currently allowed in an M-zone should also be allowed in a MRD zone.
How different, can staff kind of clarify a little bit of how different that would be?
Walk through the slides if that's helpful.
Okay, that's a reasonable ask of you all.
We did look at every single manufacturing use. And we went through and pulled out things like recycling centers or, you know, like, Ashley can show you, but we analyzed very carefully, especially in the last six months, when we were, when it was requested of us to try to be more flexible. And so, we went through, you know, line by line, with W.D., with planning, with other representatives of the city and came up with this list that Ashley contributed.
Yes, there's three slides.
I think what would be useful, though, is what didn't come over, you know.
So, that's what we're going to look for.
What currently allowed that shouldn't have allowed.
So, the slide, or, oh my gosh, the column that says existing M and the column that says proposed 2024 MRD. So, what we see that is allowed currently, that would be not allowed in the proposed MRD is vehicle wrecking on this slide.
I'm sorry, it's vehicle what?
Wrecking.
Don't worry.
On this slide, what is allowed in the M that would not be allowed in the MRD as proposed is commercial excavation, dry cleaning and laundry plant. On this one, what's currently allowed in the M that would not be allowed in the MRD is nothing. So, we have vehicle wrecking, commercial excavation and dry cleaning and laundry plant. Those are the three uses that are in the M now that would not be allowed in the MRD.
Live work is not permitted, it's a non-conforming use.
Yeah, it's not permitted currently in the M district. Because the way the West Berkeley Plan is written is that different zones are created based on the location within the West Berkeley Plan area. And so, because of the location of Muli District, live work is allowed in A.P. Muli District is much farther east than the M.
What is commercial excavation?
Let's look at the definition. I believe it's mining.
Oh, that is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And any existing uses, non-conforming or legally allowed, will be allowed to continue.
We also have a temporary use permit process. And so, you can set time limits on that for a use that's not allowed, that you propose to do on a temporary basis. And that's allowed in A.P.
And that applies to the property, not the property owner?
Yeah, any property in the City of Brooklyn.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, what uses do you envision on some of these smaller parcels, like six hundred Gilman or the site this gentleman was talking about using as staging?
We assume that those uses will continue.
But there's no use, there's no active use on either one?
Well, live work is not allowed in the manufacturing district currently. So, it could continue as a non-conforming use. We just wouldn't allow for the development of the live work unit on the site in the district or in any other manufacturing district.
But like, at six hundred Gilman, what use do you imagine would be possible there?
Any allowed use. Any allowed, we're not dictating the use, as long as it falls under the allowed uses. If it wants to continue as a car wash, a rental place, it's non-conforming, you can continue the yard on fourteen thirty-three East Shore, which is a staging area. It is an allowed use, it can continue as a staging area. And the city is not trying to dictate what individual private property owners do with their property as long as it falls within zoning district.
And is there a reason not to allow that to be a public car wash?
There is no distinction in zoning ordinance between a public and a non-public car wash.
So, it could be a car wash.
It's currently permitted as a car wash.
It's currently a car wash, but not to public.
But it could be, that's what they're saying.
Well, that's, that's our point. Getting it approved, getting it approved.
Given your proposal for MRD, is a car wash allowed?
So, um, so, what's with, uh... So, oh, I'm sorry. So, a car, a car wash is not permitted in any manufacturing district currently. But the property at six hundred Gilman has a legal right to operate a car rental facility with a car wash pad because it is illegal non-conforming use. And the Berkeley Municipal Code allows for that non-conforming use to continue. And it could be expanded with issuance of a permit to do such.
So, yeah, that's helpful to some of the concerns we heard from the public today. Are, hopefully, they're allied in terms of being able to continue to do what you're doing. On that site, even though some of it was built in a illegal, it's illegal, non-conforming.
Legal, not conforming.
Sorry, legal, not conforming. And you can get a use permit to expand within whatever uses are allowed.
You can expand a legal non-conforming use with a use permit.
And our planners are available to speak with these property owners, like you can, you can ask Ashley.
The fast chargers that we're adding to the zoning.
That's allowed by right under state law.
Excuse me?
It's allowed by right under state law.
Okay, let's move on. Do you want to go next?
I have a few comments, but I just had kind of a follow-up, maybe that's related to this. I think, you know, clarifying what supporting uses... I know that office that is supporting, supporting the R&amp;D use is allowed. And I guess to the gentleman's, you know, comment about a coffee shop, could you clarify the things like that that would be... Would they be allowed as standalone items if not, as standalone uses on a lot, if not part of a large project? Like, do those supporting uses have to be in a large project? Or could another property owner support, you know, with a coffee shop, all the people that are coming in to work in that project?
So, we have a category of uses called incidental. And so, those are associated with a primary use. And so, we have a whole list in the, this is page fourteen of attachment one, of incidental uses and what would be allowed. And so, there is a cafeteria, a food service establishment under twenty thousand square feet, live entertainment, both amplified and unamplified. Yeah, food and beverage, those are all allowed as incidental to a primary use.
But they would not be standalone uses? So, those would have to be with the project?
Exactly.
With an allowed use, allowed primary use.
Yeah, I guess, since we're just discussing. I think that's sort of maybe a bit of a concern that I have is just conceptually, I think we want to create an ecosystem of different owners and projects that work together and not be, we're always relying on a single project accomplishing everything and just having a little bit of maybe some flexibility. Also, you know, what happens if this doesn't? We all want to see a big project materialize, but if it doesn't materialize, is there a way that the zoning allows for a more incremental approach to still work? So...
Can I add to your point a little bit? So, it does seem like the, you know, what I said before about the small property owners versus the larger or the majority property owner. If those uses are only incidental to the larger unit, then it really is limiting what these smaller property owners can do on their, on their properties. And then, you know, the other question I had about that was the height. So, in the conceptual plan, it allows only, if you have nine, if you develop the whole nine acres, then you can go up a hundred and five feet. And in the conceptual plan, they said they would be putting those on the east...
And in the conceptual plan, they said they would be putting those on the eastern side of the property because it maximizes the views and the flow to the bay. And they actually showed on that little sliver where the livework is, they put the 105-foot building right next to it. And then on the other side of it, they put what looks like about 70-story, I mean, sorry, 70-foot building. So you have these two large buildings and then this little sliver. Their property is then rendered, I don't know, I don't want to say useless. I want to say undesirable. And it just seems like the pressure on that one small property owner in the midst of this large use is going to be forced to sell to the larger property. I, I don't know. I mean, it just seems to be a fairness issue.
So, I wanted to address Commissioner Marker's comment. You were asking about the standalone uses and our answer was about incidental. But food establishments are allowed as standalone as well. Ashley, you have the two, you have the table in front of you that confirms that.
Yeah, so page 10 and 11 are where you'll find the food service establishment uses. So those are allowed, depending on size of administrative or a use for a public hearing.
Is that going to be what?
Yeah, on the...
Sorry, on attachment one.
On attachment one, okay. I mean, I get, thank you. And I think, you know, we probably don't need supportive commercial excavating uses. And there's like a few things that are actually super helpful to have as supportive uses. So it sounds like, I mean, food is the one that comes to mind for me mostly, but there, maybe there are others.
I think we love the retail as well. But there, I mean, I think that we actually, when we took that second look in the last six months, like we really did expand and we thought about this ecosystem with support from O D to make sure that there were other uses that would support the customers who would, or the employees. Actually, not the customers, but the employees. We were trying to figure out what would make this a campus that would be attractive to employees that would have other services.
That's helpful. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner.
So with an 80% lot coverage, I'm wondering if that is going to get consumed by circulation, pedestrian vehicle circulation? Is there a landscaping requirement as well?
The zoning ordinance does not have open space requirements for non-residential uses.
Okay, so I just wanted to mention that for the labs on Fifth Street, near like Bancroft and Channing, there's this tiny area. It's just an entrance courtyard. But they put a couple of planters there and the birds are back and people are sitting out there. And six minutes of birdsong is worth a year of Prozac medically proven. Like, so I'm just wondering if we shouldn't be thinking just a little bit about landscaping? And I'm not sure how. I, I kind of want more time to think about this. And I have a few other questions. It seems like we got different answers on whether you could impose mitigation measures or any conditions on a zoning certificate project. Your answers seem to vary a little bit. I didn't quite track.
A zoning certificate is not, not a discretionary action. It's ministerial, so we are not, we cannot impose mitigation or conditions of approval. That's why very few uses here are approved with a zoning certificate.
I'd like, I just want more time to think about this. Supportive of the idea, it would be great to get that site cleaned up. I want to make sure the young, the smaller sites have reasonable options. I'm, I'm, I would hate to kick this can down the road, but my understanding is that it's, the council agenda committee hasn't picked it up. We wouldn't be delaying anything by picking this up. I'd be willing to come back in two weeks or in December, just because we've had five days and they were the wrong five days. Last question is, what was the original height limit when, for the project that we saw in February? What, what was the height request? And does anybody know the height in the Bear Development Agreement?
Yeah, so the height of the Bear Development Agreement, which was in the February 2023 staff report, is a maximum of 80 feet for production uses and 65 feet for other uses. And the zoning map amendment application included a table that's, I think, attachment three to your packet. So you can look at the details of all the buildings and their size and heights and parking. I believe the, there was one building that was 104 feet. But we can pull up the material.
And do we know what the original request was for the Broads' proposal?
It was in February when they came forward, it was 90. It was 90 feet. Since then, and I think what happened was they went back and as they were moving their designs forward, which they didn't, they didn't complete, conceptual design never went to complete plan. But in doing that, they were looking at the, and Ashley, you can probably describe this better than me, like the heights of the ground floor that would make this type of business viable. They recalculated and they asked for, you know, 10 extra feet on the first two stories or something like that. And there was also a rationale between like not having really big floor plates, but having like more vertical offices or more vertical spaces for this type of business. Eleanor, you know, somebody else knows the details better than me.
There's a long narrative in the zoning amendment application.
So do you granted them an extra 15 feet?
What I read in the proposal was that it was originally 45 feet and they wanted 55 feet because they said that for lab space, they needed extra ceiling height for the equipment. I mean, like, you know, when you have hoods and, you know, chemical, that sort of, that sort of laboratory space needs higher ceilings. So they were proposing 55 feet for a three-story building. But I don't, I didn't see the rationale for the 105 feet except that they needed that height to mitigate the cost of cleanup. And I didn't really see justification or rationale for that. It was just kind of in there. I don't, I don't know.
No, when I, when I read the zoning map amendment application, I see in the narrative under rationale for building height, it says a maximum height limit of 105 feet is justified for including minimum floor heights, maximum floor plates required for R and D and substantial cost of cleanup for the site. So I don't see 55 or anything other than 105 in the materials represented.
So that means they could build everything 105?
So the section that we're proposing under the mod, so the, so what the staff proposal is, is district-wide a maximum of 55 feet? And if a developer wanted to submit a permit application to modify certain development standards, building height would be one allowed modification with approval from the staff if certain findings and conditions were met. And that would be 105 feet. And that would be available for projects of a comprehensive nature. So one application of at least, not a maximum, at least nine acres in size. The zoning district is 11 and a half acres in size.
But how much of a, how much built space could potentially be 105 feet meeting criteria?
So that is an excellent question for an architect who knows. We have some on the commission.
But as I understand it, that, if they get granted that, it's a whole, it's their whole project would have that maximum? It's, I mean, whether the architect builds, you know, the design doesn't need that whole.
Exactly. The maximum would be increased to 105. But if you see the other development standards not changing, there's still a 2.0 F A R.
Uh, right, right.
You could increase that F A R by 20% on a project-wide basis.
And one of the reasons why they asked for the averaging for the additional height is because this nine-acre site is cut by the right of way, so they can't merge their parcels. So they can't actually say, so they can't merge their parcels and do two or no. So there might take two parcels that are on either side of the right of way and want to average them together. So that's one reason for this modification. The second thing is that they talked about having taller buildings to the east and lower buildings to the west in order to maintain views. And because of the F A R, you would not have 105 across the site. You would have to have these variable heights. And so some of the findings in this modification section talk about having a site design that's attractive and variable and provides, like, I don't know the language, but that, you know, the design would have to be reviewed. This isn't ministerial. This would not be ministerial. This would be designed with a good PRC.
And who's the "they" in that, your description there?
They, the applicant.
A future project sponsor. Again, we don't have a use permit. We have the idea of this conceptual project, the form application has not been submitted. What is before you is just a proposal to establish a new zoning district and we have to evaluate potential implementation of that district.
Right, no, that's, no, I mean, that's really helpful. So folks down on this end, would you like to make any comments or of any type? You don't have to, but I wanted to give you all the floor.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or we would love to entertain a motion?
Could we talk about the parking for a minute?
Yep.
So the 1,900 parking spaces that are being asked for on this property. So the Bear property, I mean, I might not have the numbers exactly right, but it's like a 46-acre property with like 1,100 parking spaces. And the, um, the Berkeley Commons is like a 20-acre parcel with, I think it was a thousand four parking spaces, something like that. This site is half the size of Berkeley Commons and asking for almost twice as much parking. What's the justification for that? And that seems to go against our, reduce the car, you know, traffic. My understanding is that's what you have right now.
That's what's been, that, so, so a developer would get to that number based on what they expect to be the parking demanded by the users of the project. And so we have a minimum requirement that we're reducing as part of this proposal. But they would be able to provide what's demanded by the users of their project.
I'm sorry, you have a minimum requirement? So the 1,900 is...
Is what's demanded by the project. So is that in the zoning map amendment materials, they presented kind of a building summary. That's based on their developer map of how many car spaces they think people that are working there would want to park. So just to clarify.
Yeah, just to clarify, the conceptual development project is proposing 1,900 spaces. The zoning district would allow a minimum of 1,300. So the minimum is 1,300 for the zoning.
But it's a minimum, so they can't do more if they want.
They can do more. They can go above. And so the conceptual development project is saying, I want to go above to 1,900.
But there's not a maximum on parking.
No.
There's a minimum of 1,300.
Correct.
And I, I, you know, so I haven't read the E I R, but like, things like shuttle programs or other T D M programs, I'm sorry, that's kind of a little bit unformed, but how does that come into play? I mean, if we, if we want that applicant to say, actually, no, like, you can't have that many spaces. So that's going to put more cars on the road, believing West Berkeley have less. What's the mechanism that we have to be able to, if not require, encourage, or engage?
I would love to see it, I mean, that's why I keep saying, you know, like, the Bear has pure, they have the shuttle, they have, because it was a deal.
We do have a T D M program.
It was a negotiation that led to that, so.
We do have a T D M program. It is discussed in the transportation section.
But it's not required?
It is required.
Okay.
It's required and starting with mitigation?
Yeah, so there's a few strategies listed on page 4.4-22, which includes a park shuttle, bus service extension, bicycle amenities, bike share, carpool, and ride matching assistance, car share parking spaces, transit fare subsidy, pre-tax commuter benefits, marketing and education.
And it's a mitigation to withdraw impact?
It is not a mitigation measure. It is just a required T D M plan.
Oh, required T D M.
To reduce the vehicle miles traveled.
Would that be something we would negotiate during community benefits?
Would it be something that was, that would be required by a future project component?
We do have a process at the city. Once a project is built, that we do enforce the T D M. So a planner is working with them on an ongoing basis to make sure those measures are implemented.
How does staff feel about having a parking maximum? Because I, I think, I think you can do the T D M, but you would still have the three parking garages. The three parking garages, that's actually true because I know it's hard to clean what is proposed, what might actually happen, but, you know.
I think that we're here to accept your comments on the proposed zoning. That's a comment. We will take that down.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to see a max. I would also love to see us not require any parking, similar to what we do with housing. However, I'm saying this, but because we do housing more regularly and we don't have these big projects come to us that often. What I'm saying, the number, I don't know what, what had to put out. That would require looking at maybe other projects and looking at what's happening in the area to mitigate that. But if, if the T D M is required, then what opportunity, what is a reasonable cap? You know, not, I think 1,900 is probably too much and it is right off the freeway. So I can see that they would want people to drive, but we're also trying to build more housing. So maybe more people can actually live here. I don't think we should encourage that much car usage in that neighborhood.
We did not analyze, staff did not analyze parking maximum, so it would be difficult for us to give you any guidance right now. If it's something you want us to look at and you still want to make a recommendation, you could ask us to, when, if, if you were to make a recommendation, you could say, and please look at a parking maximum and make a recommendation that we would run by the chair and the vice chair prior to going to city council if you didn't have us coming back to you. So that's something that we could, that we could definitely research before going to city council.
Commissioner.
No, I'm sorry.
Commissioner McEnte.
Just to be clear, Commissioner Moore, community benefits aren't going to be part of this discussion unless the developer takes a development agreement route, which I think with this zoning is unlikely.
You think it's unlikely that somebody will take a deal with this?
Yeah.
I agree with Commissioner Goach that it would be great to reduce the traffic impacts. I just want to point out that I'm pretty sure Emeryville's Emery Go-Around involved a redevelopment agency, which is a funding source we don't have. And that if we just, as commissioners or even the city council, try to like cap the parking, you should expect that you're going to limit the development in unforeseen ways. Like, we had this conversation over the Kaiser development. Nobody wants to build parking spaces. They're very expensive. So for the developer to do it, it means that that's the reality of the situation. So just, if we want to go the route of capping, we'd have to be willing to go the distance of participating in the development of a shuttle and all that. That's a whole nother project, but just simply capping it, I think we're just nip the development in the bud, really.
Commissioner.
What about reducing the minimum from 13, you said 1,300? What if we brought that down so that it... What if we brought that down, so that it would be possible?
I, I thought state law eliminated this parking requirement completely in most of Berkeley.
Interestingly enough, this is the one sliver of Berkeley that's not in the exemption.
Is it in transit?
There's no bus stop.
Oh.
That's not.
It's not readily acceptable being public transit.
I mean, just, just in the, just in the spirit of debating this a little bit, because I think it's, it is, if we don't want to go too far, I, I like the idea of making, just making a recommendation to staff so that we can make a motion tonight. But I, I also think, with respect to Commissioner McInte's point, I think it's a great point, but also we have to, we, we do have to make it possible to do different things. And we have high quality transit very close by. So I think there's, there's, or, you know, within a shuttle, a shuttle ride, you know, this could be something that's paid for in a T D M program that just becomes part of the economics of the development. It doesn't cost that much to run a shuttle to park compared to building a parking garage. So I, I just sort of have a hard time believing there's no, you know, that like the project doesn't happen, that there's no other alternatives than like we have to build, we have to build all the parking spaces. I mean, I'm curious if there's other, you know, like if you have a barge stop that is like a mile away or less than a mile away, you know, that's, that is a different condition. And it is an asset of the site. So just a little bit more of debate on it. But I think there's, there's merit to at least studying the, the number of a number, a number of it.
So in the spirit of moving forward, I would motion that we, probably with the language here, but move forward with the staff recommendation here. With a recommendation to staff to investigate options for more flexibility on parking aimed at reducing, you know, options for reducing the amount of parking, whether that's through, you know, reducing the minimum and/or setting a maximum. I don't know what those numbers should be. I don't want to sit here tilted and debating what those numbers should be because we don't have any guidance on that. But I would make a motion then for this, what the staff has and the staff to, I would, I'm very much okay with advising or recommending that staff investigate options on that.
Jeff, can I comment on that?
Yes.
Could we, instead of limiting ourselves to an examination of parking? Because, you know, we know that this is going to be years out. I think it would be, my preference would be that we would ask you to look at more creative and open-ended ways to minimize the, the use of private individual cars to come to this site. Because if we, there is the unintended consequence of limiting parking. Everybody circling, looking for a parking space in the adjacent neighborhoods. And I think we have to be optimistic about the fact that in 10 years or 12 years, when this thing is probably actually going to happen, if it does, is maybe there's some other kinds of ways that we're moving people and people are moving. Maybe there's more, you know, five years ago, there weren't cargo bikes. And now every person in my neighborhood has two kids and there's stuff on a cargo bike.
I, I think that's, that's more in the spirit of what I was intending, so I think that's.
But I think the challenge is, the mechanism that we have is parking in the zoning. The only, we don't have a mechanism to say, explore innovative ways of moving. We don't have that in, that's part of the T D M policy probably.
Well, then I think.
But zoning only allows us to set up parking.
I guess I'm just saying is somehow we have to get the language. To me, I feel like making the language around the T D M part of it is the part that we really want to elevate somehow.
And that applies to all projects, correct? That's not just to this project.
I'm just worried about the parking.
No, I, I agree, and I'm just trying to use the mechanism that will at least encourage the developer to look at other ways and not just go for, and approve something that's, and, and I understand what Commissioner McInte is also saying, that, you know, if they didn't really, it's expensive to build, if they didn't really want it, they wouldn't do it. But they might, you know, but I think it's worth studying it since we've been doing it with, with housing. And I, I think it's fair to look at it for any developing project that we can. Like, what is in here in terms of parking and also bike parking?
Bike parking, that's what I mean, that's a bigger, it's bigger, like, there's one of these bigger.
We should look at those.
Chair, point of view. I think Commissioner Two had a, he was the first one to propose a, did you, am I correct? Did you?
Make a motion?
Made a motion, yes?
Yes. Oh, he did make a motion?
He did, and I don't, I don't think we addressed it yet. Can we hear your motion again, Commissioner?
Maybe it wasn't stated quite as much, but what you proposed was that to have every use that is currently in the M applied to this new, was it M R D? In addition to the additional things that you all suggested for the. And my understanding in that discussion was that there were three items that potentially could not be, we did not carry over, which were vehicle wrecking, commercial excavation, and dry cleaning of some sort. Laundry. So did you state that as a motion? Do you want to state it as a motion?
And then I would have to amend it to also include looking into reducing the parking requirement or having a parking maximum.
Did you have that?
Oh, so one thing that, when, when you were talking about the T D M, Justin reminded me of the T D M included parking package that we all looked at in 27, 2019, 2021, where in the C D M U, we have, we have parking, we have T D M for housing projects in the downtown. It's much harder to zip rich. But if you want us to examine parking maximums, parking minimums, and a more robust T D M program for this district, that's impossible.
Yeah. I think bear would be a good starting point for that.
So that, Commissioner.
I'm not sure why we're including the M uses, because it seemed like there wasn't really any relevant there. I also want to suggest or have included in a motion that you cover the discussion we just had about these non-conforming uses and how they could be expanded, if not in the zoning ordinance, then in the staff report, so that when someone refers back and tries to understand what the intent was, it's clear, because it sounds like what we were talking about, car wash, coffee, et cetera, staging, is all going to be doable. So just stated in the staff report.
They could be standalone as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just so that if somebody picks this up 10 years from now, it's clear. I would still ask for more time. I'd really like to pick this up in December, if we could. And I do think there should at least be some thought, I don't, I don't know inclusion, but some thought around landscaping and some thought and clarification about whether a zoning certificate project is subject to the mitigation measures. I'm still not clear. A 60,000 square foot project really is not a big project. But at the same time, we can't foresee the consequences of having zero discretion on it. Like, don't put that driveway there, A C Transit wants to do a bus stop, or we want our transit shut, like, you have zero discretion. And I know we'd like to act like an A U P is a big deal. We're talking about big stuff. They're spending years planning this. An A U P is nothing. And it just gives these people who do have expertise the chance to apply it and have a tiny bit of leverage on things. So I, I would suggest not reducing the zoning certificate standard. An A U P is really fine.
I have a second on that issue about landscape and open space.
And I want to follow up on that. What is the mechanism for ensuring reasonable inclusion of open space or native plants or water, water treatment? Is that, is there a mechanism in either zoning or the E I R to address that? Because if not, you know, we have to find with it.
It's a big part of the zoning.
Okay.
So I, I've heard three motions so far.
No, you've heard three recommendations that will go into a motion.
Yeah, I think that's correct. But can you list those three things off?
Right, so Chair Vincent suggested that we proceed with staff recommendation. Commissioner Twu suggested that a staff recommendation include that the M R D district be revised to include uses such as vehicle wreckage, commercial excavation, and dry cleaning uses. We've also heard that you want us to explore a more robust T D M plan and also consider requirements to revise the proposed zoning to include open space in that plan, see the requirements. Oh, yes, that's right, to consider parking, either reducing the minimum required parking or identify a maximum parking and use the bear development as an example.
Or robust C D M.
Yeah, I would combine that, that would be subsequently with the T D M. And then there would, so you have the landscaping piece, and then, are we, is this piece around the zoning certificate?
Yeah.
Right, discussion of non-conforming uses.
And the threshold for, for the permit for the project, the C C threshold we mentioned for 60,000 to reevaluate that.
Yeah.
So the recommendation would be for us to recommend staff reevaluate that in the spirit of perhaps bringing it down.
Can I ask a clarification on that? Is there not a design review process that would address driveway or this crazy transit stop? There is a design review process, right?
This is subject to design review.
So then why do we need to not just have it be permitted through C C and negotiate the details through a design review process? Seems like the appropriate place for that. What does that?
It is a zoning, if, if it's allowed by R I P, then it doesn't go through the design review.
Okay, okay.
Correct, but things like the location of a driveway ingress, ingress into a property is not design review, it's more.
Fire.
A building permit, and, and that would be, just because a project is approved by a zoning certificate doesn't mean that we can't apply those regulations.
So from a health and safety perspective, we'll be fine. From an urban design perspective, it might still be things lacking.
Interesting, a clarification from our last meeting about this. I, I remember some discussion of objective standards being.
Yeah, so I did possess the commission objective standards for open space and landscaping. There was not support from the commission.
There was not support from the commission, okay. But it could, if, if there were objective standards, they, they would apply to the zoning certificate?
Objective standards do apply in the zoning.
Could I ask why you're doing the excavation and the dry cleaning?
So, okay, yeah, let me, so, so we have a, a large recommendation or an emotion made, which is the staff recommendation plus a few things, which are guidance direction for staff to, to do research on. And I can list them. But I did want to take a pulse on the one that Commissioner Ching raises, which is Commissioner Twu's suggestion to basically include everything wholesale that's allowed in M. If we, I guess I'd like to see a little temperature on if there's enough support to keep that in the motion.
So can I recommend that we find a second and then have a discussion? If generally we're really good about it?
No, that's, that's a good idea. Would folks like me to sort of loosely read the motion?
Please.
Thanks. Okay, so the motion is, and help me staff if I don't get it in as much detail, but, is it okay? Aileen, here.
If I can just, one thing about including hazardous operations such as vehicle wreckage, commercial excavation, and dry cleaning. One of the primary purposes of the city council referral was to clean up the site. Any types of uses, clean it up and then dirty it again with the use of hazardous materials.
Right, and, and that's actually the reason that I wanted to take a pulse on that, because I didn't, I actually personally did want to include your motion. Because I think staff and O E D have done the research and analysis on that. And there's a reason that they've not put those forward. And, and I would trust their analysis more than I would ours here. So if it were me and I'm making the motion, I would actually. Because I, I think to.
We've got most of the things we've covered already.
Okay, thank you.
Are you seconding the motion?
Well, I haven't, I haven't really made a motion yet. Because I don't think Commissioner Twu's was ever framed as a motion, was it?
There was.
It was, was?
Yeah, it was.
So the motion that you made a long time ago was basically take the staff report and add anything that is currently in M.
Right, but I'm always.
Period.
No, no, what I'm saying is Commissioner Two made a motion to pass the zoning standards with these changes, and that those are the changes you're summarizing. You made, if we could, there's a friendly amendment that we don't include the first thing that you said anymore.
Okay, I never heard a full motion made by myself.
Okay.
Forget it.
If you did, I'm happy to say. Just keep going, just keep going. I'm happy to, to give you that, I, I didn't mean to take it from.
Just keep going.
Okay, so the motion is the staff recommendation plus asking staff to do research into providing more robust T D M and opportunities for reducing parking requirements and parking on the site. As, as a whole thing, you could probably word that better than I just said. Is to also look into landscaping and outdoor space requirements on the site. We're not doing the M uses, and we're not doing the zoning certificate threshold issue. We should leave it off decidedly, right? So it's just those two. And then the, the third thing that I've heard, which is probably not necessarily in the motion, it's more a direction to you, which is have the staff report clarify the incidental uses as they, as we discussed and as they can be standalone for instance. And, and the non-conform, legal non-conforming aspect of that. So that it's clear in, you know, without someone having to like redefine print. Okay, did I capture everything? Okay, so that is the motion.
Second.
So you may give the motion to Commissioner Twu. And the second would be from Commissioner Moore. Correct? Okay. So roll call.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Merker.
Yes.
Chair Vincent.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Ching.
I'm going to pass. No, can I pass? Yeah, you can come back to.
Commissioner Middleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Martinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Twu.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Vice Chair Goach.
Yes.
Commissioner Ching.
Yes.
Motion.
Okay, thank you all for that. Thank you, and apologies if I missed the, the motion.
I always like to start with a motion.
I, I know. Okay, thank you, and thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
And reminder that you can submit the E I R comments till September. Okay, we have one more item, we're two and a half hours in. And the last item is item 11, which is the planning commission 2024, 25 workload and the commission calendar.
So Chair Vincent, may I suggest a small break? This would allow the meeting of the chair and members of the council to retrieve their microphones from the tables here at the city's expense to record.
Oh, did we discuss?
Recording the E I R comments.
Oh.
Better than I have.
Oh, I see.
For the preparation of the final E I R.
Oh. Yeah.
I was just getting excited that we were going to have microphone.
I just want to bring your attention to something that happened at government meetings in the last week. And that is that we had a developer select using the highly flammable ugalitjust as part of a landscaping plan. And so the mention of landscaping is important. And so the mention of landscaping is important.
Okay, we'll do five minutes, so just eight to 30.